Ready?
That's it.
Okay. Ready? All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September third Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. We will begin this evening with a conditional use hearing on the application can in connection with one hundred ninety East Ark Hollow Road.
Scott? Yes, yes, this is a initial years application on the conditional use hearing on the application, excuse me, of John Rodenbeck concerning his property at the address described concerns the installation of a sanitary sewer system, on lot septic system within the setbacks. We have his application, we have a his permit for the on stop on lot sewage disposal system. A letter from the Bucks County Department of Health dated April fifth, twenty twenty four. A letter from when associates dated August twelfth, twenty twenty four. And we also have the public notice and the advertisement which was placed for tonight's hearing in the Doylestown intelligencer, excuse me, just the intelligencer now, August twentieth, twenty twenty four and August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. And this was reviewed by the planning commission on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, which their recommendation is containing your agenda, which was to approve subject to as outlined in the township engineer's letter. So anyone here who's here on behalf of the applicant?
I'm John.
Come on up to the podium. Yes, all right, Mr. Ronenbeck. You're the applicant here. Well, actually, have you sworn in first?
Yes, I do.
And so you're you're the person who put in for your property at one ninety Star Colla Road for the on lot septic system?
Yes, that's correct. I'm the owner.
And just before we get started any further, is there anyone here seeking party status? Either in a favor or opposed to the project, party status means you have the opportunity to question witnesses, present your own evidence. If you don't see party status and you do want to make a comment on the application, you will still have that opportunity at the end. So is anyone seeking party status? Seeing no one, Mr. Ronback, I'll just turn it over to you and let you explain what you're doing and why you're here tonight.
Okay, sure. So I purchased the property last August, August of last year and and been undergoing a lot of upgrades and renovations to the property, just like replacing windows, much needed renovation and been sitting dormant for quite some time. And one of the things on one of the conditions on the the homeowners report and the inspection reports was that the existing septic system was no longer viable and it needed to be replaced. And 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 so this is that application. And I had my engineer come out, take a look at it, and that's the plans that you see in front of you. And he was here at the planning commission meeting with me last week, but unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. So so that's basically what this is for.
And did you have opportunity to review the August twelfth, twenty twenty four letter from when associates?
Absolutely. Yeah, I've got it in front of me.
Is there any issues you you have with that letter, anything you can't comply with?
Not at all.
Kurt, do you have any comments on this application for the board, please?
The main comment is that in the application package, there was an analysis done by the Bucks County Health Department SEO, I believe. And generally, they indicated that the site was not suitable for a standard type system. They kind of they pointed out in an opposite way, saying that the site was suitable for an alternative style system, which is proposed. But in looking through the test pits that were excavated, there was nothing that stood out to me is in looking through the test pits that were completed on the property. There's nothing that really stood out to me to show that there would be a higher rank septic system available based on the onsite soils.
So you're comfortable making a recommendation to the board tonight that the conditional use is appropriate in this situation?
Yes, I'm fine with the planning commission recommendation of this August twelfth, two thousand twenty four memo from when associates.
So any questions from the board?
Kurt, is it accurate that the depth of the soil is only about twelve inches before you reach bedrock?
Correct, it varies. It was a shallow limiting zone. So I the system that is proposed does appear suitable for that, the ground conditions.
Okay.
I know you had a lot of, there were a lot of test pits back there, so they did find the the best place they could find it, is my understanding.
And they also found another reserve area on the site, which you did not test for previously, I believe.
Yes, there was a, I think he he had put that next to it as a as a reserve site. Yes.
Rich, do you have any questions?
You're okay with all the conditions that we put on?
Yes, absolutely.
No, I was at the meeting and saw it.
Okay.
Okay.
This time, there's no other questions. Anyone in from the public have any comment to make? Okay, at this time, we can conclude our public hearing. This is application is on your agenda under action items number one. If you would like, you could also move it up earlier and we can just make our decision now.
I think we should do that. That makes sense. So I will make a motion to approve the conditional use subject to the condition set forth in the engineer's letter.
One second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Shall they wait or?
You're you're office here tonight, you'll receive a letter from me detailing tonight's decision.
Okay.
Within the week by by the end of next week, and that will be your zoning approval to move forward with the township.
Thank you very much.
To start getting the other items done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on.
You're done. Thank you.
The the board held two executive sessions. One was on August twenty seventh at eight thirty in the morning regarding the police contract. And the second executive session was held this evening before our business meeting. We started at seven o'clock and we finished that around seven thirty two ish. Next step, we have our safety and emergency services, and we have Chief Madden here with us for our police report.
Good evening, everyone. Tinnicum Township Police Department responded to two hundred and eighty five calls for service to August. Eighty four were for service, sixty four were criminal or investigative, including one burglary report, one theft report, two fraud reports, one arrest for terroristic threats and related charges, one arrest for a fugitive from justice and one fraud arrest. Hundred and twenty seven were for traffic, seven were for training and three were for court. We had three reportable traffic accidents in August. A two vehicle crash occurred at River Road and East Dark Hollow after motors proceeded through a stop sign without clearance. A three vehicle accident on six eleven was the result of distracted driving. And a rollover crash on River Road occurred after a motor's lost control due to driving too fast for conditions. We've had an average of two point four reportable crashes for August over the last five years. I'd like to address some of the concerns from the public following the crash on River Road on Friday, August twenty third. I want to start by highlighting some of the improvements that have occurred over the years. Between February twenty twenty and May of twenty twenty two, the township worked with Penn dot to get the speed limit lowered to twenty five miles per hour between Point Pleasant and North of Bridge Five. Additionally, grant funds were obtained to have two permanent speed signs installed on this stretch of River Road. The permanent speed signs were added as a deterrent for speeders and data showed a reduction in major speeding violations just by the signs alone. In March of twenty twenty three, the police department added Accutrac lines for speed enforcement in two locations down on River Road. Again, between Bridge Five and Point Pleasant. After five months of enforcement, traffic data showed a twenty one percent reduction in major speeding violations on River Road at Bridge Five. And this reduction has remained consistent through the state. There was an eleven percent reduction in major speeding violations at River Road in Point Pleasant. Between August first, twenty twenty three and August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, officers conducted sixty nine traffic details on River Road, eighty one citations and sixty one warnings were issued. Forty one percent of all of our citations issued were on River Road and thirty three percent of all of our warnings issued were on River Road. Of the eleven crashes on River Road in this section over the last five years, eighty two percent have been single vehicle crashes with sixty three percent of those being environmental related. The crash from Friday, August twenty third is the only reportable crash on River Road between Bridge Five and Point Pleasant over the last year. And is the only speed related crash in this section of River Road over the last five years. And the investigation revealed that the operator, a forty six year old male from Buckingham, was driving too fast for conditions. He lost control while driving south on River Road. The sedan rolled multiple times and made minor contact with two other vehicles in the northbound lane. There were no injuries reported, luckily. The driver was cited for careless drive, careless driving, reckless driving, driving vehicle at a safe speed and roadways lane for traffic. The location of this crash on River Road presents challenges when it comes to conducting speed enforcement. But the police department continues to conduct speed enforcement in this general area. Additionally, I spoke with Don Centafonte, Traffic Study Supervisor from Penn dot, who stated the township could put down and maintain speed warning signage on the way roadway on River Road if that's something the board would like to do.
Where are those?
If you wanted to put markings on the roadway as a speed warning, yes. That is something that the township could do.
Like the actual speed of twenty five miles.
You could put warning, yeah, like written on the pavement. Any questions on that before I move on?
You had mentioned when the Accutrac lines were put down in March of twenty three, that there was a reduction in speeding by twenty one percent. For what period of time was that reduction?
That was over a five month period.
So from March of twenty three.
March through August of twenty twenty three.
Okay, and then what? Did you say what it has been since August of twenty three?
That twenty two or twenty one percent reduction has remained in place. And this is all the data that I've gathered from the permanent speed signs down there.
Okay. And the Accutrac lines, they were temporary or are they?
They're still down there.
Okay. Are they used in any way?
Yes.
How were they used?
We use them to conduct speed details.
Okay. And have you done that speed details in the past year?
Yes.
And what have the results been? You gave a lot of numbers. I may have missed it.
Yeah. I don't have any new numbers, only to say that based on the traffic signs that are down there, that that reduction is still in place. It hasn't been reduced any further.
Okay.
All right.
So they.
I thought you said there was a number of citations that issued from.
Yes.
It was an actual number. I think that's what you were asking.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah, there was a number of citations issued.
Yes, eighty one citations and sixty one warnings.
What period? One year?
That was over between August first, twenty twenty three and August twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, eighty one citations and sixty some warnings.
Sixty one warnings.
Okay. And the eighty one citations are were they for speeding?
I could not break down all of them in the timeline, but the majority of them are for speeding.
Okay. How often were you does your do your officers do traffic details in that section of thirty two?
It depends on the week.
Like how free are they out there maybe every week at least?
Weekly, yes.
Weekly, okay. All right. In a moment. Do we have any other questions or?
Well.
Chief Madden.
I think I know where we're going with this thing. So my question would be, what is the problem with putting down now? You know, whether that's a problem, is there any concern with putting down what I'm gonna call low rise speed bumps in a certain section of the river?
Penn dot has said that they will not do that.
Yeah, I understand that, but Penn dot also has them on four thirteen, which is a Penn dot road. So I don't understand that whole logic. You can't have it on a state road, but you can so can a state road over in Plumstead. I'm asking you.
Yeah, that that would be a question for Penn dot.
Of a low rise. I'm not talking like the one that's over in Plumstead, which is about a four inch lift. Talking something about a two inch to an inch and a half, somewhere in that range.
I don't recall their reasoning for why speed bumps would not work in that section of River Road.
I'm asking you, is there a problem that you see if we have them in reserve? To be honest.
I could see, yeah, I people not seeing that the speed bumps are there and hitting them too fast.
Got to be some notification before the speed bump markings on the road to show there's a speed bump. I mean, I don't think anybody does split miles on those four thirteen speed ones. I think they see it coming and they're pretty well marked. So other than that, is there any other problem that you see with that?
Again, this would not be my decision. This is a Penn dot decision.
But certainly Penn dot, I think when they ask the local police department, what's their philosophy, they don't they don't care.
No, they do not.
And Rich, are you referring to this speed hums by the Piper'sville Library?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and those are pretty steep.
Yeah, I think they're.
Are you sure it's state road there? I thought that was Bedminster.
That might be old.
Yeah. Four thirteen makes a left at the Piper Tavern. And goes out to the traffic light.
Well, let's say it could be confusing because I thought it was an extension.
No, but four thirteen makes a left and goes out to the traffic light, they run road.
What you have they ever told you what their what their reasoning was why they wouldn't allow that? Have they given you any specific reason other than we don't like them?
They may have, but I do not recall that, but I could look and.
Maybe somebody in the public may have talked to them and heard something.
I think we asked them this last year. There's an email thread on it from about a year ago.
Now, I'm not talking about a speed bump every fifty feet. I'm talking about a speed bump every, say, five hundred feet. You can have a speed bump because once you go over and you know the speed bump's coming, you're gonna you're gonna stop, you're gonna slow down clearly. Because what you're gonna do, you're gonna speed up in in two hundred feet, then you have to hit your brakes again before you hit another bump.
Chief, can you describe the challenges that the the that the roadway presents to law enforcement and you're conducting speed enforcement there?
Yeah, the roadways are narrow and they're winding and we don't have a good amount of sight distance in order to safely conduct any sort of speed enforcement there. We never have.
Would would you say that that would possibly be a reason that they would not allow speed bumps?
It could potentially. Again, I can look back and see if I can figure out what Penn dot's answer was regarding speed bumps.
Let me ask you another question then. I'm sorry. How about not gonna call them rumble strips, but there's a certain way of impregnating rumble sound within a pavement across the width of the pavement, not on the sides where there's the rumble structure they have on the sides, but in the pavement itself. With the markings, when you go over that, it gives you a pretty loud sound in the sense that you know that something's going on with the road. And with the markings, maybe that could help. Is that another possibility?
We can inquire with Penn dot, but I do think that maybe we asked about that as well.
And they said no.
I can't specifically recall. I would I will have to look back at the emails because I do think that there's a thread with it with the the old township manager.
Interesting. They say no to that because they used them at the they use them at the toll booth out there in Plymouth meeting.
And they work. Not as well as a speed bump.
Chief, from the accident from last Friday, it's not clear in my mind exactly where it happened. Was the was the car traveling, the car was traveling southbound?
Yes.
And was there a rise that it came up over at excessive speed that caused it to lose, caused the driver to lose control?
I was not out at the crash, but it does appear that maybe he went off the roadway and perhaps got knocked over that way, maybe hitting the wall or the ditch turned the car based on his speed.
Hitting the roadway on his passenger side?
Yes.
Okay. And the other two accidents in that area, you said they were due to environmental issues?
Yes.
What were they, the environmental, if you remember?
The two other reportable crashes that we've had in that area were both ice related.
And speed, as far as you're aware, did speed play a factor or no? So what do we do to to keep our residents safe as they're coming out of their driveways and, you know, traffic in the other lane from being hit by a car that's traveling too fast?
I think that we continue to do enforcement down there when we're available. We can check with Penn dot and see if any of those options are viable. Unfortunately, we can't be down there all the time to catch every violation.
Okay. Anything else from the board or Judith?
My only question too was going to be what what did the previous email say? And could we find that out and see what was done in the past? And then, of course, try to see what we can ask Penn dot again. Even if they did say no before, we can ask again, bring up the fact that some of these items may be in other municipalities. And could, you know, why would we be excluded if other municipalities are included in the allowability of these items? If we could look into that, I would agree, it would be greatly appreciated. Some of the old emails and and getting to the bottom of some of this, I think, would be important to see if there's anything else that we can actively do.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, and I think we can take public comment on the chief's report at this point. Yes.
You have to share the mic.
So is this public comment or is this separate just to? My name is Dr. Richard Belukas, four twenty one River Road. The floor with the data that you presented tonight is that it's not showing the magnitude of the problem. We're just hearing some raw numbers and it's not in proportion to anything. A true statistical study would be for a period of time, but say from three o'clock in the afternoon or to six o'clock in the evening or seven in the morning till eleven in the morning. You have, and I know you're able to do this electronically, how many cars pass that junction at a high speed above twenty five miles an hour or thirty five miles an hour? And once you have that raw number, you can then juxtapose it with the data that you have to see what is the proportion. Quite frankly, this might be two percent. We don't know. It might really be sixty nine percent. We have no idea because all you're getting is some numbers thrown at you. We don't know the larger scope of the problem. So really, it's an injustice to just bring numbers like that before the board and the public when in fact you don't really have a statistical analysis of the magnitude of the problem. I'm not saying you personally, I'm just saying that in terms of really being able to present a true picture of what's going on there, you need to do a little bit more research into the true magnitude of the problem. So I just want to present that and regard the car actually went off on the right hand side, and I have pictures of that. And during my public comment, I'll talk a little bit more about the nature of the accidents that have happened at that junction. I just took a video an hour ago of myself coming off Smithtown, turning right, going up the crest, and you'll see the blind spots that are there. But I can say that for later or do it now, whichever you'd like me to do it.
When you say the car went off the right side of the road, do you mean the right side as you're heading southbound?
You're heading southbound, correct. It comes, well, talk a little bit then about it. Should I just do that now?
Yeah, I think that is what the chief had.
No, we said on the passenger side.
That's the right side.
And we're saying, no, we're saying is that is actually what's going on there is that the car came up the hill and then went to the left side, okay, into into the ditch. Well, the the right side, okay, I'm thinking coming coming north, correct, correct. And tonight, I actually had pictures of it where it went into the ditch and then came back over.
Okay.
And that's not the first time that that's happened. It's 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 it has happened before in that in that in that area. You want me to talk a little bit more about, go on here, I can come back later.
Just any any, if you have any other public comment on the chief's report, otherwise.
Nothing else. I would I would say in terms of the recommendations that are coming forth there is, you know, we we've been down this road before. And we've talked about different things that could be done with the previous chief that came forth for doing it. Whatever it is. And I recently posted on the Tinnicum website, and there were some superb ideas that came forth from the public.
Can you clarify what you mean by Tinnicum website?
There's a Tinnicum Facebook website that goes on. There's also a Point Pleasant website. And I post actually a letter I'd sent to the supervisors and to our new town manager. And a lot of people had responded to it. The majority were very, very positive and experiencing the same problem on River Road. But there were some really good ideas I thought that were put forth, everything from a three to four way stop sign to put there. The road language, as you were talking about going there.
A stop sign at Smithtown and River Road.
Smithtown and River Road, both south and north coming forth, coming off Smithtown and possibly from the road from the bridge coming over there also. That was an idea. There are the speed bumps, but someone suggested, no, no one wants to create a more dangerous situation. Yeah, whatever. Yeah, but you know what I would really like to write, first of what? I'm not coming here to complain. I'm not coming here to bitch. We're a great community. We all want to work together and come to a solution. And you know, for years, my pet peeve has been improving safety conditions on River Road. I so much want to improve those safety conditions. When Larry and I pull out of our driveway, we literally, when we pull out, we take our life to the hand, not only pulling out, but also coming traveling north, when we have to come over the driveway to go up those cars, they come over that crest. Sometimes I say, Rick, just put the fall down and get up that driveway, I'm coming down. The same situation also is coming off Smithtown Road. It literally, and I know you all have been there, you've all traveled. I have a a video of it tonight. I actually took it. And coincidentally, when I was taking the video, there were two speeding cars that came right by. Now, what I did do, chief, is Cindy Gaspar and I, we actually went down in front of her house where the electric, the electronic sign is. We sat there twice from seven to seven twenty, another time from nine to nine thirty. And we actually took a picture of every time the electronic sign went above thirty five miles an hour. And it was frequent, really was frequent. And I'd love to bring that data to you, if you want to see that, or we could do it on a more controlled study. I think this is the kind of data, and you know, I know Don Judith, he speaks very, very well of you. He knows you. He's worked with you from previous. And he knows me well over the years, have a pretty good relationship with him. I really believe that if we that if we sit with him as a community and bring forth the actual data, the pictures that we have, the videos that we have, the collection. I've had three serious accidents at that driveway over since my existence there thirty five years where cars had actually either flipped over or have gone off the road. And it's not only the the injurious behavior to of the driver and his or her safety. God, it's us. You know, any one of us could have been in the other lane when that car flipped over. So it impacts all of us as we come up there. And I know that there on the road, it's not the only area in Tinnicum Township. There are other areas where we need to address this as well. I guess I'm doing my public comment too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, too. I saw that go over.
Larry Brandt, four twenty one River Road. I just listened to your report. I was just, it stuck out for me because I came upon the scene with the ambulances and the car upside down because I live right at that property. They went off on our property. And when you mentioned current conditions and the current road conditions were clear, it was a dry day, so I don't know why that language is included when it was a normal day. There was no weather, there was no issue that I recall. You know, it was dry, so I just feel like that sets.
Do you mean the too fast for conditions?
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's a part of the the vehicle.
It just, it it rings of there was some reason that you might go more slowly than normal.
A perfectly, like a blue sky day.
Those are the. That's helpful. Thank you. I appreciate that. And then as for the area where I forget what the the strips are that you measure the speed. I think we're all aware that that's further down the road where it's questionable why Penn dot put twenty five. I know they don't want to get faster and slower and so on and so forth, but there's no residents in that area. People have gotten tuned into that's where you are. I think they know to slow down. Anybody who travels that more than twice says, okay, that's where they are. So I think the there's village areas where there's more density is where somehow, I know it's problematic, but somehow there has to be a way to really try and enforce and manage that those areas, not an open stretch for a mile where there's not a house to be seen. not an open stretch for a mile where there's not a house to be seen. Um, this is my thoughts.
Yeah, I have one more thing just ahead.
Super fast, please.
We are posting on YouTube under Tinnicum Township River Road Accident, the actual videos that we have and the pictures. So those people who are watching this meeting on Zoom can see the actual accident data that they can look at as well. Again, it's Tinnicum Township River Road Accident.
Thank you. Chief, just as a follow-up to, um, what Rick was talking about with the speed data that you're collecting and have been collecting, um, over the past, I don't know, maybe two years at this point, from the signs, the permanent signs that are there. We don't need to do it now, but I'm interested in having a look at that and seeing kind of what it shows. So before October, we can get together. Anything else?
Chief, what would the difference be, uh, that compared to what was just said, uh, by the gentleman who was at the podium, compared to what the data that you are collecting currently? So what would you say about that?
I'm not sure if he just wants it more broken down by the time of day, but I don't think that the data is going to be any different unless you're just looking for a, a breakdown more specifically on times.
We can look at it and, and dig into it and get it a clear picture as to what it, what if anything it shows.
Do you collect this kind of data anywhere else in the township or just down there?
We can collect a similar type of data with our temporary speed sign.
Okay. I'm interested in what goes on in other parts of the township other than this River Road. I have a feeling that this is a problem throughout the township. So we can collect it elsewhere to see how it compares to River Road. I'd be interested in that.
Great. Great. Thank you, Chief. Do you have anything?
I have more.
Okay, great.
On your report. Long day. Um, along with River Road, we had one truck hit the Golden Pheasant Bridge last month, um, unfortunately. But again, I did speak with Don Santafontaine, um, over at PennDOT and he said the signs have been ordered and delivered to New Jersey. So there will be no left or right turn signs installed on Route 59, 519 at Bridge Street in New Jersey. So.
In Milford.
Yes. So hopefully that extra signage prevents the trucks from even turning onto Bridge Street to getting over into Pennsylvania. Uh, we conducted 20 truck details, um, on River Road last month totaling approximately 22.5 hours. Three violations were observed during those details and two drivers were cited.
Is that part of this report that we got? What you're talking about, the, the truck details, I got one here from a Mew that says that, but I, I noted.
What's the date?
That was for August 8th through, August 29th, I thought, 8th through the 29th of August. Does that sound familiar?
I initially provided, um, the township manager with some data and then sent some updated stuff with your monthly report. And then I updated the paperwork for tonight to include through the end of the month. So if any numbers are different, it's because I included the last three days of the month.
Okay, I'm just looking at it. I, I counted five violations on this report.
So the truck violations that are on there, that's just how I'm tracking trucks that are reported on River Road. Some of them are unfounded, some of them are there. Um, it's just the easiest way that I found to track the reports that we were receiving.
And you have them as unfounded because you, an officer didn't see them?
We'd go down and investigate. It would be gone on arrival.
Okay. And John, that, that report was the very first one that I asked for. So what she's talking about are the subsequent reports.
Okay. All right.
So along with that.
Yeah, no, I just wanted you to know that. That was the beginning.
Uh, along with that, we had seven trucks reported on River Road, three were discovered during details and four were unfounded. Supervisor Breslin inquired last month about the Bedminster Road Safety Study. Um, and I did speak with PennDOT and they said there's not any widening involved in the project and they're just using a six-inch wide line paint instead of a four. We had ice cream with a cop last month at Oh Wow Cow, which was fun. Uh, we had about 28 kids come out and they were all provided with free ice cream thanks to donations to the Tinnicum Township Police Foundation.
That's great.
And our first responder event is in two weeks on Saturday, September 21st from one to four at Delaware Valley Fire Company. And we're hoping to have our schedule of events out this week. So keep an eye on our social media.
Okay. That's great. And that's all?
That's all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Our first public comment session, Mr. Cashman.
Hi, Tim Cashman, resident. Just want to ask the board if I asked a few questions. I went and applied for a right to know for the turnback agreement and, uh, the Wood Tigers Fund Agreement. I had some questions on those. The one question which is a little confusing for me is why do we have listed that we're going to purchase another about 300 feet from the bridge to Red Hill Road? What's the purpose of that?
So are you in the turnback agreement?
Yeah, yeah. So it looks similar like that. And I highlighted where the bridge is and I'm highlighting the, the extra 300 feet. And what was the reason for that?
Kurt, is that for the repair of the roads?
Yes, there's the repair of the road, but it was also, um, intersection to intersection. And that's line diagram work.
And how's that to do with the bridge?
Yes, that section of road that the bridge was on, they, the offer that was given to the township was that segment. Between both intersections, the sheep hole and the Red Hill side.
So why do we need that road for the rehabilitation of the bridge? That's my question. Why do we need 300 feet?
Typically, my understanding is when there is a turnback, it is PennDOT of a, of a structure, an asset like a bridge. It is PennDOT that determines kind of the endpoint, the end-to-end point. And they take it to, oftentimes they take it to an intersection. Is that right, Kurt?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, because I, I did reach out to PennDOT. And I asked them what was the reason for that.
Who did you speak with?
An authority at PennDOT. That's as much I'm going to tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, you have private meetings, I have private meetings. You know, we don't get much, you know, on that end from you guys. So I have to keep this moving forward. It was never asked to change that. And I said, did Tinnicum have the option not to purchase or receive that extra 300 feet? And they said yes. And I was going to ask Scott if he knows anything about that. That was an option not to put that down in the agreement.
No, in fact, they told us those were going to be the limits that they were offering us, and that's what we would have to take.
Okay, did you, so we didn't have to take it?
No, that was not what we were told. We were told the opposite. We were told.
It would be helpful, Mr. Cashman, if you told us who you spoke with so that we could understand. You know, when Scott is speaking with PennDOT, he's speaking with the attorneys for PennDOT?
Yeah.
Are you also speaking with the attorneys for PennDOT?
With the attorneys at PennDOT? I'm not going to disclose that.
So I mean, we could be comparing apples to oranges here.
No, we're doing apples to apples. We really don't need the 300 feet. We don't have it at Gaga Hole Road coming down to go, we, we go right to the bridge, the yellow line goes right to the bridge on Gaga Hole Road. We don't have 300 feet before that bridge.
I think it's also for continuity and maintenance sake for cars that are, vehicles that are maintaining the sections of the roadway.
Yeah, but the township's receiving 300 lineal feet in a flood zone that will be responsible for it.
Well, part of that is we have, we're looking to fix the erosion, um, from the Wood Tiger offer. So, so we need access to that section to, to fix that part of the road. And to stop it halfway between the erosion and the intersection didn't really, it made it awkward for maintenance.
Well, I'll move forward. The Wood Tiger Fund. This is, Rock saw what they have and what, what they want to do and get done. And I commend them on that. The one thing in here was a few things is, um, through the whole document a, as you read through it. They insist on real-time communication. So who is going to be the real-time communication with the Wood Tiger Fund as this develops? Who's going to be responsible in the township for that? Because they want real-time communication all through this document that they need to be notified of any changes or if anything develops. So who's going to be appointed for that bridge? Because this is, they're building a bridge here. And we need someone that's going to be in a full-time position to answer these questions. Because the way you read through this, at any moment they could pull out, if they weren't properly notified of any changes.
Well, I mean, I, we've, we've identified, uh, our township engineer to be the project manager for the township on this project. So it would be, Kurt, as the project is moving along, he would be the one in communication and knowing kind of closely what's happening on the ground.
Okay, it wasn't actually stated all in here, but it did state who they had. There's a few other things in here, but I'll keep it moving. On the document itself, uh, this was signed August 6th, correct? And.
It was signed at our, after our last meeting.
Yeah, and, um, and so Susan Wallace didn't sign it yet. So is this still valid? What are we, what are we waiting for with this?
Well, I think that she, they picked up a copy to be signed.
We now have a, a signed copy from Susan Wallace. Yes.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That was one of the big.
At, at the time of your right to know request, we did not have that. We now do.
Okay.
So we get, we provided you what we had at the time, but we, as of today, we do have a signed copy.
Right. And it is also not uncommon for agreements to be signed in counterparts, Tim. So it's, it's a valid agreement.
Understood. But that was, and when you received that and it's signed August 6th, there was no signature from the other party.
Got it.
That does was one of the big reasons to ask. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there any other public comment at this time?
Good question.
Are being presented with a correct picture of the data. I asked the board through to the chief, um, is the data that we were presented with, I'd also include state police data?
I'm assuming it does not, but.
That it does not. So that's an added layer of information. Quite frankly, in order to give us a full picture of what's going on, not just Tinnicum Township, but the police also issue citations and report for accidents. So it's important that that and any other entity be presented to us. We have a full picture of what's going on.
Could I ask the chief, does the state provide that or do you have to request that, chief?
The state does provide their call list every month for any crashes or traffic stops that they would make in Tinnicum Township. And those reports are also provided to the board every month.
Oh, so is it, is it included in what you, in the data?
Yes.
The state police numbers are included in what you've provided us?
Today, no.
Okay.
But.
Usually are they?
No, I do not provide state police data, but.
Well, is there something that you can do easily? Can you incorporate the state police data with?
They handle any traffic crashes. I can include that, any reportables.
I think that would be helpful, certainly. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Any further public comment? I, I thought so, Mr. Quimby. Come on up.
Hi, Quimby. I come to every meeting going to sit there and not say anything, but it gets ridiculous. As far as speed bumps, the potholes are two inches deep throughout there, so it's not really going to make a difference. This bumps on 611 by, um, Swamp's Auto Body are over two inches. People still go down there 55 mile an hour or faster. Your rumble strips, you two will not be happy with them because I can sit at our farm and hear the rumble strips on Route 29 and between French Town and Milford. So you're not going to be happy with that. A four-way stop sign is only really just going to cause aggravation because somebody's going to get rear-ended because you take me that's been driving that road my whole life and I got to train myself to stop in the middle of nowhere for no reason. So I don't think that's going to work. I think the only sensible way is you have to figure out how Nicole can, Chief Nicole, can enforce the speed there because the site is bad. People are going to fly through there no matter what you do. Like I've said before, you can't fix stupid. So I think that's the only way you're going to do or ask the state police to enforce the speed through there. Not that I want that, but I think that's the only way you're going to control it and keep everybody happy. As far as your driveway, I've noticed since the accident and I've heard all things, your ornamental grass is growing pretty wild. You might want to trim that back and then you'd be able to see a little better coming out of your driveway. Well, apparently you can't. And then it's Smithtown Road. You can't make a left turn. Can you guys, are you able to make a left turn out of your driveway?
Let's, let's, that's not classified.
Well, Smithtown Road, you can't make a left turn because of the site distance. Well, I think they may have the same condition at their driveway because of the known. So I just think it, maybe some clearing back would help or ask the state to enforce it with radar. That's all.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call for public comment for this round. Come on up.
My name is Reggie Young, 113 East Dark Hollow Road. So tonight, as I was thinking about coming to my first township meeting, there was a 55-foot tractor trailer, uh, that stopped in front of my house. I live on the corner of East Dark Hollow and Stagecoach. And it driven up onto Dan Kalinsky's front yard. And I went out. East Dark Hollow and Stagecoach.
Which one did they drive up on?
Well, they were, he was trying to turn onto Stagecoach. So I think the signage temporarily while this whole thing is happening really has to be adjusted because I live there and see that all the time. So I actually had to back him up to the school. I spent 45 minutes trying to figure out, trying to show him that he really needed to go down 412 to 202 across New Hope because he was going to try to go north on 611. I explained to him he couldn't get under the bridge, but there's no, he said GPS still showed him as Stagecoach being the way to get down there. So I had the opportunity to talk to all of my neighbors while I was doing that because everybody was on their way home from work and people were telling me stories of, you know, people asking each other on Stagecoach. I personally, because I use it now all the time, have seen unbelievable behaviors on that road. So I don't know what you can do.
He's absolutely right. I, I live on Stagecoach.
Okay, so you know. So the tractor trailer problem there right now is unbelievable. I mean, it literally happens several times a day.
You have tractor trailers under them?
I seen one, but I, I attributed that because somebody was getting it delivered. It was a small tractor trailer, but it was a tractor trailer moving to the west. But I think the bigger issue on Stagecoach is even though there's a speed sign there, chief, nobody really does over. I don't see many people going over 25, but the dust is horrendous. I mean, it's a nightmare up there. So, um, passing, I haven't seen much passing, uh, only because.
I don't think that's the biggest problem in the world. Probably somebody passed me as I was turning this corner around.
But you're right, the GPS tells people if that road is closed on Dark Hollow, they need to go to Stagecoach to get down to River Road or vice versa.
But I've helped several tractor trailers turn around there. I've seen people, I mean, he was dragged, we had to drag the signs out of the way so that he could even back in. He was almost against the pole. I mean, it was, you know, it's a thing. So it would be very easily prevented, I think, if there was better signage that at different points, like at municipal, it could say like, no trucks because I saw a huge Raymore and Faaligan truck. I mean, you know, it wasn't a tractor trailer, but a huge one. Turn, breaking all the limbs on the trees, which isn't, of course, the end of the world. It's not like life safety issue, but it's, it could be prevented, I think, if the state would, I guess that's a state issue, right? That's PennDOT. That would have to do something. Yeah.
But they leave it up to the locals to put up all the signs. Is that correct, chief?
They put the sign out.
They put all those signs out? I know you moved one, you helped, or you moved it yourself. Okay.
We're going to, we're going to be talking about tractor trailers later. If we can ever get to it.
I just skimmed that there were four fulfillment centers in Tinnicum Township.
We're going to discuss that also.
Okay. Because even before the road was closed, the amount of tractor trailer, I would never have guessed before I lived there. The amount of tractor trailer traffic down East Dark Hollow is crazy and I don't know where they go. I guess they go south from there.
And I'll, I'll also, this evening before I came to this meeting, I received a text message from a resident who lives on 32, above French Town, uh, within our township. And she's thinking about putting a camera out. And she's thinking about putting a camera out to try to get the license plate numbers of all the tractor trailers that are across that coming down the road. And I believe that Bridgeton.
We're gonna go over it later.
Okay, all right. I'm closing public comment for right now. Our solicitor's report, we're E on the agenda.
Yes, prior to today, I did not have much to report, but we did receive from our police officers from the union, a notice of Act one eleven arbitration this morning that requires us to have five days to respond. With that, with that, just getting that today and the the timeliness of the nature, I I would just recommend we look into hiring Labor Council to help us with this. You know, we would recommend Eric Brown with Siena Law. He's someone we've worked with for the last five years. With one other, one other of our municipalities. We know Judith has worked with him as well and says wonderful things. So the emergency nature of it, I would suggest a motion tonight to inquire about hiring Mr. Brown.
Okay, so we would need a a motion to amend our agenda to include.
Not because it was not this one, but we're within twenty four hours because it came to us this morning. We can't, you can't just without making a separate motion to amend, you can make a motion to engage his services.
All right. Rich, do you can you repeat the name of this solicitor who does?
Eric Brown with Siena Beloar is the name of the firm.
Sian Beloar.
Siena Beloar, S I A N A. I'm not going to spell Beloar.
It's okay. Rich, any thoughts on this?
No, I think that's probably a good one.
Okay, John, any thoughts on this?
Sounds good.
All right, so I will make the motion that we engage his services for the purposes of supporting the township and negotiating the police contract.
A second.
All in favor? Thank you, Scott. Anything else?
I had nothing else this evening.
Kurt, engineers report.
Yes, I'll try to make this quick and I guess we'll we'll. I provided a project list dated August twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four for the board packet. The first six, five items are typical updates on subdivision status. So that's something that is more administrative. However, I'll go over the first three general items that that are listed in bold. And the first one happens to be truck studies. So this office has completed an analysis on Hollow Horn Road. So we looked at past ordinances and records for that section of road. And there's, there are a couple conflicting ordinances and restrictions in place on various sections of Hollow Horn Road. And the part that was not restricted, there is a bridge with a nine feet height restriction. So some of the items that we looked into physically with the road were lane widths, roadway widths, intersection radii, height, clearing issues, and we took photos along that corridor of Hollow Horn Road. And found that sections of the road that were not restricted were kind of greater than sections that already had restrictions on it. So the recommendation that we had or our office had is that the entire length of Hollow Horn Road warrants a truck restriction, truck and trailer restriction. Obviously, except for local deliveries. So if the Board of Supervisors was inclined to enact a restriction, the solicitor could be authorized to prepare an ordinance for advertisement and adoption. And we could prepare the required TE one oh nine form to document the township files on that.
What size, what size truck would we be restricting up to what?
There are some sections now that are just general, no trucks. So you basically anything that had a height over nine feet or a trailer, I mean, the geometry at the intersecting roads, the radio were were very low. So the thought was that it actually could warrant a total restriction for trucks, no trucks except local deliveries.
And we're talking about Hollow Horn from Headquarters Road to six eleven.
All the way to to six eleven. And most of that already up to this, the township building is already restricted in one way or the other.
From six eleven to the township building.
Correct.
So it's the curvier part.
Correct.
Well, parts of it are, and it's odd restriction.
Yeah, there's a few sections that are left out where there's a Penda section along Red Hill there.
What's also left out from Urban Road to to down here where it intersects with Red Hill Road is left out. I mean, I I looked them up on Redham Mall. There's no trucks over ten thousand pounds from Municipal Road here down to Red Hill Road. They put that same restriction on Brick Church and Red Hill or in Red Hill Road and Brick Church Road to Dark Hollow Road. But there's nothing from Urban Road to Red Hill Road.
Right.
Then from there, it's no trucks with trailers, not no size specified from Hollow Horn Road to six eleven, which was curious.
So well, so for simplicity, yeah, the the no trucks, the ten thousand G V W almost gets every size truck anyway. That is towing a trailer. So essentially, if it was no, I mean, no trucks except local deliveries would be much easier to enforce, I believe. Because enforcing it over certain G V W, you'd have to have a a traffic unit that could weigh the vehicles.
Yeah. Okay.
Is this something the Board of Supervisors would be hoping to? Would you like to see exploration of that? For the October's agenda? I'm not sure what you're.
Does this go to the planning commission at all too, or is it just?
The way I I would recommend it, if if the board was inclined, an ordinance could be drafted and then sent to the the planning commission to be reviewed and then come back to the supervisors.
Sorry, Kurt, can you repeat that?
I I would, if the board is inclined, I would suggest that you get an ordinance at least drafted from the township solicitor. And then send that to the planning commission to look at before acting on the ordinance.
And the
You don't have to do that tonight. It could be done at another meeting. It's not actually listed on the agenda tonight. It was just something I wanted to provide an update on.
Yep. And John, if I'm remembering correctly, you've seen trucks on that section of road.
Several times an hour. And and some tractor trailers, not too many, but there are occasionally, your occasional fifty three foot long tractor trailer is coming down there. Probably twice a week with one of those. But it's a regular through route for your let's say your class eight truck on up, which is what I was thinking, class eight, which is dual ax truck over thirteen, over thirteen tons.
So our thought process was that an ordinance be created with the solicitor and the engineer, and of course, the input of the Board of Supervisors. And at that point, we could bring that forward to either the October meeting, or if it's going to take any longer than that at another meeting. And then that could, if that's sufficient to the Board of Supervisors, could then go to the planning commission also and then come back to the Board of Supervisors. If you so choose.
Rich, what do you think?
Yeah, no, I I think that the planning commission would be the most important part of this once we give them some direction. But their views would be something I've been interested in listening.
Yep. So let's move forward with that plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. There, the analysis is still is also underway for Durham Road. However, Durham Road appears to require coordination with Nakamixon Township and or Penda. So I plan to discuss that further with the Township Administration and the Board of Supervisors. I I suggest we should probably start by reaching out to the Township administratively to kind of gauge their their interested, their interest in a cooperative plan.
I I spoke informally with with Matt Overback about that, and he said that they did consider that ours. That they've been working on it, maintaining it to just replace the stop sign. So if Nakamixon wants to be having a lot of influence, and they should be paying us for that stop sign also.
Well, yeah, the Penda, the Penda mapping gave the gave the appearance that there is a small portion that is in Nakamixon's township. And actually, the the intersection itself appeared to be in Nakamixon. So I mean, if if historically there was a handshake agreement or other, I think that should be more formalized if we're going to implement further truck restrictions.
The claim from Matt is that the property, the line actually runs just north of that intersection and like through the middle of that hotel. It's like
I saw two, if you look on Pendas, they have an I vid log with the sections. And I saw two different views where one made it look like it was in Tonicum, one was in Nakamixon. But the actual segments give to me give the appearance that there is a portion of Nakamixon.
Let's see what they have to say.
Yeah.
You're talking about Durham Road just north of Anawanda, the section where it meets six eleven.
Yes, correct.
It's not even all that. It's just
It's a very, yeah, it's a very small section. I mean, we did also look into turning templates for tractor trailers. And it was inefficient or insufficient to accommodate the large trucks that are that are going down that road.
Depend on any ideas to throw around about it in there.
So I I just, I feel that we should engage administrative assistance with Nakamixon to kind of gauge their interest in cooperating.
Sound good. Yes.
Golden Pheasant Road Bridge, the chief gave an update on one hit last month. We're still waiting on additional easement and design details from Penda for the temporary and permanent signal discussion. I have not heard anything new on that. Headquarters Road Bridge, I reported last month that we received fifty percent structural plans. I I did look at the plans and they, it does appear that they are are following the historic guidelines. And their McMullen Associates is furthering that the preparation of the plans. I'm, I did also prepare civil permitting packages to be submitted to D E P for GP eleven authorization. I've drafted the notification letters for the county and the township. And ready to go. I was just waiting on direction and the finalized Penda turn back agreement and landowner easements before going ahead with that.
Okay, that sounds good.
And that is, that is all that I have to report on for tonight.
Great. Next up, we have the managers' report.
Thank you. I have several announcements, one which we were just notified of today, and I apologize for the late notice, but again, we were just notified. We will have our seal coat contractor begin the seal coat project starting tomorrow morning. They will be finishing in another township and moving right to us. The roads that will be done are Jug Town Hill Road, Tinby Drive, Valley View Drive, Yewers Town Hill Road, Breezy Drive, Everbreeze Drive, Perry Auger Road, Union School Road, Old Forge Road, Boulder Road, Red Cliff Road, Lody Hill Road. They will have flaggers out there and they will make the roads passable and so forth. So just please be patient and all good things do take time. So thank you for your patience. We also have the information on the township website too, if anyone didn't get a chance to write all those roads down as I was talking about them. So I have I have a couple of announcements also, and I would I would ask the chairperson of the supervisors if we could please have an added executive session due to police contract negotiations this evening.
Oh, certainly. After our meeting tonight?
Yes.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can we do that? Can you all do that?
You you can if they're available, yeah.
Yeah, are you available? Yeah, we can.
Thank you. Bucks two fifty celebration of America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday in two thousand twenty six. Commissioner Harvey's office wants to highlight our historical organizations. Send brochures, handout materials, website flyer to his assistant. The commissioner's office planned to create a formal process of submitting website information to post your historical organizations and events for this celebration on a Bucks two fifty events website. So everyone, please, if you're interested in getting involved, look at our website. We have all the information on there. We, the Bucks County website also has that information. So it should be an exciting time for all. We are currently working on our MMOs for the uniform and non-uniform employees. We provided that information to the Board of Supervisors. A letter was sent to begin the energy audit. That's going to be done by Penn Dot. I'm sorry, a lot of Penn Dot. Penn State, the cap, and they will provide an analysis for us at one point. That was something that the supervisors were involved with in prior months. The zoning hearing board did have a meeting. They are going to meet on, excuse me, September twelfth for the Six Walters Lane for the application for the variance of the ordinance. Application was reviewed by the Planning Commission on August twenty seventh. The Planning Commission also reviewed the conditional use hearing that you had, I'm sorry, the conditional use application that you heard this evening at the use hearing for one ninety East Dark Hollow Road. We also had some information that was provided to us by Carl Rothart regarding preventative deed fraud. We also placed that information on the township's website. You can sign up with something that the Bucks County Recorder of Deeds, Daniel McPhillips, had come up with. We have this information on our website. It's very informative. It talks about deed fraud and what you can do to avoid it. So if anyone's interested in engaging in that, please look on the website or go to the Bucks County Recorder of Deeds. It's called landex dot com. Apparently, there's been a lot of fraud with deed takeover. So a lot of good information gets provided to us by a lot of good people here in Tonicum Township. We greatly appreciate that. Excuse me. We also had a letter that Eleanor had sent to the B C A T O, which was the resolution that Tonicum Township Board of Supervisors hereby opposes House Bill nineteen seventy six and House Bill two thousand forty five. It, that bill supports local control of zoning decisions to serve the unique needs of our community. John Cole's letter was sent to the local river municipalities regarding river road and truck traffic. He'll have a report for that this evening for all of us. The Headquarters Road Turnback Agreement was sent to Council for Penda's execution. The Wood Tiger Agreement was amended and signed by the Board of Supervisors and Wood Tiger did execute it. We have our that in our solicitor's hands at this time. On Friday, August eighth and ninth, we had a storm that a hundred people had went without power for about twenty four hours. Some roads affected for a short time with tree debris and damage, which was handled in a timely manner by our Public Works Police Department. And power was restored by Med Ed. We greatly want to thank everybody, especially the police department who go out there with their chainsaws and and the Public Works Department who so diligently does the same. There's a lot of hard work that goes into that. Our first responders night, of course, is September twenty first from one to four at Del Val Volunteer Fire Company. On September twenty second, we have the Best Initiative Plant Exchange. If anyone is interested in that, that's at ten a m. at the Tonicum Community Park off of six eleven and to Hickam Valley Road. Otzville info is on the website and there's also flyers in the back if anyone is interested in that. I think the plant exchange is very interesting. You can bring a plant, you can gain a plant. So it's it's a wonderful, wonderful initiative. September twenty eighth, there's a paper shredding event at the Grasse Elementary located at six hundred Rickard Road in Sellers Town. I'm sorry, Sellersville. I'm having a hard time reading this evening. I apologize. I attended many meetings this month again, was wonderful doing that, getting to meet all of the persons on all the different committees. It's been a busy two months, hard to believe. So I would like to thank all the committees for all of their hard work too. We've also been communicating with the fire company chiefs to try to select a date and time and location for a town hall meeting to talk about how the fire companies work, the amount of work that they put into things, the monies that they utilize, the monies that they need. We're hoping that town hall meeting will be coordinated with them in short, short period. Also would like to again report, Matt Overbeck from our Public Works Department did again contact Penda regarding the culvert cleanout at Center and Headquarters. At this time, I do have an email. We were basically informed that this would not happen until late fall. So we're hoping that we can derive at some sort of an agreement with Penda at one point to try to work together more closely with the work that is getting done on some of the roads, the state roads. There is a program out there that some of the other municipalities engaged in that the municipality itself does some of the work and Penda pays them for that instead of waiting for Penda to do some of that work. So that'll be something that I'll be bringing to the supervisors when we find out more about the program. I know that we're limited with manpower also, but some of the smaller things such as cleaning out, I shouldn't say smaller because it is a big thing. But some of the items that we really feel need to be taken care of, and we don't feel that we should be waiting until fall for a clean out of a culvert. Maybe there's some projects that we can actually accomplish if the Board of Supervisors believes that's an acceptable way of doing things. And then we would get some funds from Penda to do that. We, of course, it would be an agreement that we would be going into. So it's something Um we, of course, it would be an agreement that we would be going into. So it's something I'd like to look into if the board is amenable to that. Think that's a good idea? Thank you. Um some of the other items, uh I've, I've been in contact with Senator Coleman and State Representative Shelby Labs Office regarding grants. We're going to have a meeting, another meeting regarding that um because it's imperative that we begin to look into grants for the township. So uh you'll see that that is actually on uh one of the action items for this evening. So uh thank you very much, and I don't know if anyone has any questions for supervisors.
I just want um the letter that we sent out to the um Toll Bridge Commission. Did that get onto our website? Is that on our website now for people to see?
Yes.
Okay, great. Because people have been asking me about it on Sunday. I was over at River Fest doing something else and they were asking where they can, what our position was.
Yes, that was. And I also wanted to report that uh Dark Hollow Roads work, uh from what we were informed of, uh there's still a target date of October fourth. They're taking advantage of their sixty day permit to get the work done.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Um we also, the board has received the um report from our Public Works Director for the month of August. Um and he breaks it down into activities of his department by week. Um you know, they, they when, when you see it this way, they're just involved in so many things every week, whether it's, you know, repairing equipment, mowing the field over at the park, sawing trees that are, you know, blocking roads. Um it's really impressive when you see it this way. Do you have any questions, Rich, about their report? John, do you?
No.
Okay.
Probably how they get it all done. I don't know.
I know, really, it's remarkable.
They did another eight ton of blacktop today. Very impressive.
Okay. So next up is I on the agenda. It's our consent agenda. Um so we have items one through seven that are on everyone's agendas here. The board has received supporting documentation for these. Um I have questions, Judith, about um the items under number seven in the consent agenda. Can you speak to the dispersments out of the general fund?
Yes, I can. Bear with me, please. So every, every, every month, the Board of Supervisors is provided with the cash dispersment journal that is for the month. And what you will see is you'll see a high number here. It says four hundred and twenty one thousand zero zero one uh point forty three. The reason for that is we do have all of the invoices that ha, are needed to be paid. Uh some of the items were that we did uh take care of this month were the Delaware Valley Property and Liability Trust. So that was almost twelve thousand dollars. The Workers Compensation Compensation Trust was five thousand dollars. So we had some uh, some expenditures that were usually not in the monthly invoices. So you will see that the reason for the general fund monies were so high, some of these items are because, like I said, we have some invoices that we normally don't have throughout the year and we have this month. The other item that you will see, if you look, we have a Pliggett General Fund CD, two hundred and forty six thousand dollars. So that is not an invoice. That is a CD transfer that I had transferred into a higher interest fund so that we could accumulate more interest for the funds that we do have for the general fund. So it's quite confusing sometimes because you see this on the journal and it's a cash disbursement. It's not an invoice. It's a transfer into a CD and it does say general fund Pliggett CD. So I wanted to make sure and explain that because I think it's important that we're not spending four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars this month um that we're actually spending, uh I think about a hundred and seventy some thousand instead due to that transfer, you'll see. So I hope that helps explain. And then the other item is you'll see some items in the open space too. Uh I don't know if we have a uh a transfer in that one yet, but I did do a transfer for the open space um because we, we were able to get a one-year CD at a five point four five percent interest rate, which was really a good rate. So we're trying to make sure that we're diligent uh in what we're doing with the funds that we have in the municipality for the residents.
Great. Um can you just give some detail on the capital and equipment dispersment of twelve thousand four oh three?
Certainly. Uh the capital equipment fund uh was for twelve thousand four hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents. It was the last payment for the police vehicle. Hooray. And
And then I see there were monies dispersed out of the escrow of nine thousand four hundred sixty.
Yes. And to backtrack to the open space, I will say there was a two hundred and thirty six thousand dollar transfer to the new CD rate also on your, on your paperwork there.
Okay, thank you.
I want to go backwards there, sorry. And and the escrow accounts, what's been taking place, we've been uh going through the escrow accounts and we have been uh looking in the past at uh all of the information that has been in the township. Say uh someone comes in for a zoning hearing and they have an escrow that they start. So there's sometimes our monies that are left over. So we've been reviewing the escrow accounts and we've been going through them and we've been dispersing monies back to the applicants if there's money due back to them. So that's what uh you are seeing with the escrow accounts. So far, we have closed out three of them to date. Uh so we're very, very happy to announce that because we're going to be working towards more of those closeouts. So we, we, we do not have uh those funds that are actually due to people who have been doing work in the township.
Okay. And are you coming across any escrow accounts where you're asking for additional funds?
Yes, we are. Yes. Okay, thank you for asking. Um there are some escrow accounts that uh the township has actually been paying for some of the work that's being done instead of the escrow accounts being fully funded. So we're reviewing those also. We're spending a little more extra time with uh the accounting person that we're utilizing and the accounting firm that we're utilizing. So we are doing that because we do have some things that we're taking care of in that manner. And we've sent uh several letters out to uh applicants that do need to replenish their accounts and we're working diligently to take care of that also. So thank you for asking.
Great. John or Rich, do you have any other questions on the consent agenda items?
No. Other than you can't vote on one of them, which was the minutes from the last meeting that wasn't there.
Okay. Um so I will make a motion then to approve the consent agenda items.
Oh, sorry.
Um all in favor um for items one through three and five through seven? Aye. And then for item four?
Aye.
Aye. And Rich is abstaining. I just had, actually, I had one comment on the um, on the minutes under the section relating to the resolutions. Was that corrected? Okay, great. Thanks. It was just a reference to the wrong planning commission, but it's accurate now. Action items. So we've done the con, the conditional use hearing and that item is done.
We are finished, yes.
Um next up, we have the consideration of sending either our solicitor or our zoning officer to attend a zoning hearing board hearing in connection with Six Walters Lane um and a request for a variance of ordinance number fourteen oh six. Um the Planning Commission has reviewed this application um and their recommendation to the Board of Supervisors is to maintain a neutral position and make no recommendation.
Yes.
Any discussion? We just give just a one sentence detail on what it is that the applicant is seeking?
Yeah, so uh and Mr. DeBaradine is here. Uh this was, this is sort of a revised application. This is something we dealt with previously. Uh basically, he's pairing your steps correct. Yeah, he's replacing the steps down, those along the river, steps down to his dock or the river, to his deck. Um there were some issues previously. He's corrected those, hence the reason the recommendation from the Planning Commission is for us not to get involved and allow him to seek his variance.
Okay.
Yeah, you remember, I was here.
I do, I do.
And I know Scott and Kurt. And they said best to take it out.
Yeah. Can you just, for the benefit of anyone joining us remotely, they will only be able to hear you if you're speaking into a microphone.
So I had um put in some stairs and a platform for the stairs. There was a problem because it was in the floodway. You remember the story? You suggested that I meet with Scott and Kurt and I think it was Terry was with us, was he, Scott?
The door check?
No, it was um it was Mark.
And so after talking with them and they explained the issues with having things in the floodway and concern about it floating down and liability issues and the federal government. To make a long story short, in name of compromise, so I'll just tear it out. So we did and then we fixed it and I got that approved. And now what I'm suggesting is putting in stones. You know, nothing that can float down the river, just stone stairs. And um and the, and the issue with the planning commission, the reason they, they were neutral was um point two of section fourteen oh seven. It turns out that not only do you have to get a fourteen oh six, you have to get a variance, but you have to do fourteen oh seven, which is for structures in a floodway. And point two, they say it has to uh how is it in the benefit of the township, community, public health, safety and welfare? And the guy said, well, I don't, this is just for you. And that was, that was the biggest complaint. But to tell you the truth, I did some research. And if you read the World Health Organization, their Harvard studies, their studies by this London School of Economics, healthy individuals are happier individuals. Water sports and being actually on the water is good for your mental health and your physical health. And they, there are also studies that show that individuals that are mentally and physically healthy are better citizens. And countries that have higher mental and physical happiness and health are actually more successful countries. It's actually an economic, so you can, I have, I have the reports on my computer. I can read them to you, but you can do the, the, the research and you'll see that. So it was a bit surprising to me that that was their big complaint. Um you know, that because it's one, one point of, of uh seven points to uh section fourteen oh seven. And we meet all of them. That, that one, of course, it's it's, it's attenuated, although they also done a study that says if you're happy, your happiness reaches three degrees of separation from you. And
Neighbors will be happy.
Yeah, my neighbors will be happy, but also, but then their na, then their happiness is affects people three separations from them. So it goes on forever. So in that event, so I actually think I need section two if you believe all these studies.
Okay, so you believe that you need a variance for ordinance numbers fourteen oh six and fourteen oh seven?
That's what I was told by
And have you applied for the, both of those variants?
I have.
And the Planning Commission reviewed both of those?
Yes. So that's where we are.
Okay.
So thank you for your help last time and I think we're hopefully on our way.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions, Ollie? Do you have any questions?
So this motion would be to see if, if the Board of Supervisors wanted to send the solicitor or the zoning officer.
Right.
If not.
We would make a motion if we wanted to do that. If not, we would not take any action.
Yes.
Okay. Um Rich and John?
I was at the meeting. I'm satisfied with what he's doing.
No action.
And I'm okay with no action also. Your hearing is on uh next week? Okay, good luck. Yeah.
I just had one other comment to make it.
Sure.
Would have to obtain the floodplain permit. So this is just back on the variance side.
Okay.
Yeah, so
You understand that?
Yeah, I filed for the building permit, the floodplain permit, the variance and the um the other one. It's four, it's four things I had filed. They're all done. They're all in.
Excellent.
Okay.
Awesome.
And they were really nice, by the way.
Uh number three, consideration of the adoption of Resolution nine of twenty twenty four for the Local Share Authority Grant Application. Judith?
Thank you. This grant application, uh we would possibly use this grant application for several items. Um one would be for in the addition that is being proposed for the building. Another would be for a vehicle for public works and another would be for a police vehicle. Um the most important uh item that we had discussed, which would most likely be the highest value, would be the addition. This grant, you can apply for up to um excuse me, one million dollars. So uh it would be advantageous if we were to do something of that nature for the building. Uh there is no match, so the, the board would not be required to provide any monies or any work or anything of that nature for any match. Uh so what we're doing right now is we're considering the options as to how we would move forward and what projects we would move forward on. And uh so I'm asking the board, I know that there was a discussion prior to my being here. I know there's uh some plans uh regarding a building addition and so forth. So if the board would be amenable to any of those items, uh I would hope that we would work on something of this nature. And uh there would be some other things that we would work on next month. Uh we would most likely uh work towards, if it were the building, uh we would work towards some other items to get to that point. So we would have a, a sketch plan, which we do have already. We would need some dollars amounts, dollar amounts as to knowing what the amount would be to be, we would be asking for, how much you would be wanting to spend if you were wanting to spend any funds, that type of thing.
Um is there a deadline for this grant opportunity?
There is.
What is it?
It would be, I, it's either the beginning, let me see, September, October. I think it's the beginning or ending of November.
Okay.
But it's important that we try to get it in between September and November and not be the last applicant.
Okay.
It's important.
And my recollection is that the Local Share Authority Grant is a pool of money that is available to municipalities statewide and it is funded from um kind of uh it through casino activity.
Casino activity.
But you don't need to have a casino in your municipality to be eligible for these grants. Is that right?
Yes, it is. Normally, the, the casino grants are gotten very easily from the contiguous municipalities. Because we are not contiguous to the casino, that's why the LS A grant has been created for those of us who are not. So we all have the opportunity to apply and gain access to the funds.
Um well, I would make a motion uh to adopt the resolution, which would allow you to move forward and put together a grant application in time for the deadline.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't do discussion. Sorry. I think we're getting discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um next up is the consideration of Delaware Valley Fire Company's easement agreement and um the proposed amendment that has been proposed by the Solicitor for the Tinnicum Conservancy and um which our Solicitor has reviewed. Um I believe those discussions are ongoing.
Yeah, so the discussions are ongoing uh right now. Uh to just give everyone a little bit of backgrounds, uh there's an existing conservation easement over the Del Valle Fire Company's property. Uh the Tinnicum Conservancy is technically considered the enforcement agency. Um there was some issues regards to the way it was currently written with regards to some of their fundraising activities in order to sort of allow those, we're not violating the letter of the agreement, even though no one's really enforcing against them right now. The thought was to amend it, to better delineate the zones that are protected, what they can do in the less protected areas uh within their building on the eh with regards to their fundraising activities, as well as some of their training activities. And rather than the conservancy be the enforcement, the agency will say, they'd ask the township to really take the lead on it because of our responsibilities regards to fire protection and, you know, it's, it's, it's the fire company there. We know they're doing what they're doing to raise funds and, you know, prepare and protect the township. So the, the thought from the Tinnicum Conservancy is we're the better entity to really take the lead on reviewing things because fire safety is just as important to us as it is to Del Valle. So um right now, the next steps, you know, earlier this summer, I had talked with Conservancy about, you know, getting all this information. So now it's just talking with the fire companies, making sure they're good with everything and we'll be able to move forward.
Okay. Um no action to be taken there from?
No, no actions needed at this. No, no actions needed at this time until we know for sure that the agreement with the fire company is good to go.
Okay. And next up is consideration to direct the planning commission to review ordinance number two two eight to confirm the requirement of a closed loop system when installing a geothermal HVAC system.
Yeah, the reason we're looking at this is because we had an application for somebody wanted to have one of these one of these geothermal units put in and not have it be a closed system. They wanted it to be an open system. Now, what an open system does is it pumps the water out of a hole here, extracts the heat from the water, coolness, whatever they were, whatever happens to be the function that happens to be doing, and then put it back in a hole over here somewhere. And usually they're several hundred feet apart. The problem we have in this township is their aquifer is very fractured. It's very and it's very fragile. So you can be pumping the water out here, replacing it over here, but the aquifer that you're taking out of is not being replenished by what you're pumping back in. So you could be draining your well and the well of your neighbor and so forth, and not really replenishing with the water that you're taking out and running through your GP, your geothermal system. So what I propose is that we in this township require the geothermal units that are put in are are closed systems, which pump the water out, run it through the system or run it through a system that's that's not removing the water from where it is. It just stays in the system. And it goes back in, comes back out again. It gets it gets reheated or warmed up or cooled, whatever it has to do. It comes back out into your system again and is reused. The same water is reused, basically. So that's what I'm proposing that we require in this township because of the nature of our aquifer, particularly when you get over towards the west side of the township and along the river. There are a lot of places in the floodplains and all. They don't have trouble with the aquifers like we do on areas up on the Palisades and all, where some wells are nine hundred feet deep. There was one place I visited last year. It's got three wells, seven hundred feet deep each. When one goes dry, he goes over to the other one, and then he just has to rotate around to those so that we don't want to have somebody pumping water out next door for the geothermal. At that point, you want to keep it closed. So I'm going to send this to the planning commission, have them just do a minor amendment to the ordinance to require a closed loop system with the installation of geothermal.
Do do we know what? Why would someone choose an open system over? I mean, I always thought it would.
It's I it's I can too. It's actually cheaper.
It's cheaper.
Okay.
Much cheaper.
Okay.
Can be more more efficient, just the trans proximity of the heat of using the actual water instead of running tubing through the water to get.
Right.
But there is potential for adverse impact with an.
Yeah. We don't want that because the adverse impact is well gone dry. And on this township, it's not easy to fix that problem.
Okay. Anita, did you want to come up?
Anita Nolan, resident. I had a geothermal system at my last house. It was a five thousand square foot house roughly. We pumped in the very hot days in the summer. We started out with an open loop system. In the very hot days or the very cold days, we would pump about seven thousand gallons a day. Over time, the well, the dump well started, the fissures would close up. So on a very cold day or a very hot day, we would have a fountain in our front yard where the water was not capable of being going down the the dump well. So we ended up changing to a closed loop system. I didn't even know they made open, excuse me, open loop systems anymore.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So we've we just had an application from one that's what brought this issue up.
I understand, but I didn't even know they allowed.
Yeah, I don't know why they would allow them personally. We're not. We're going to try not to.
I must say, the ordinance doesn't say one way or the other, so it could be looked upon as it's not allowable because it doesn't say anything as to open or closed.
There are a lot of problems with the open loop systems.
Yeah, so.
I think it's clarification that we're really.
Yeah, I want to make sure that it's clear that we only want closed loop systems. Right now, what happens with the zoning officer gets this application. What he did was he referred it to the the consultants that we use for regular wells. And, you know, if it passes that, their scrutiny, then it would be allowed. So I don't know that it would pass their scrutiny anyway. But yeah, it's it's a tremendous amount of water coming out that we afford in this township. So that's why we want to send it on to the planning commission, let them
Yep.
bring us something back.
I think that's a good idea, Rich. Yes.
Do I have to go to the department?
Yes, come on.
I've installed quite a few geothermal systems for customers, and in some states, there's a limit to the depth. And I just wondered if there were restrictions that were also accompanying the restriction on being closed loop.
So our planning commission is pretty thorough, really in everything that they do. So I think they would be kind of looking at, can they be properly tightened up with restrictions or conditions, or does it just need to be closed loop and that's it?
So that comes on.
Yep.
Yeah, they'll they'll figure out the design restrictions or requirements, most likely, and and give us a recommendation. Okay, good. We need to make a motion.
Do we need a motion for that, Scott? To send it to the planning commission?
Oh, no, you don't need a motion.
Great, thank you. Supervisors comments, do we have any? I don't?
Got a few.
Okay. I'm watching the clock.
Yes, I am too. I gotta get I gotta get up a quarter to four, so I might be here long. First off, the deed fraud is something that's important. Again, I'm going to reiterate this. Houses are being stolen. People will be sitting on their porches, you know, minding their own business. And all of a sudden, a moving van shows up and you know, people have proof that they purchased the house and now they're we're no real problem. I've actually gotten some emails from the Bucks County recorder deeds. I'm in this program and my name's pretty common. So anytime my name comes across their their their, you know, request for deed changes, they send me an email and I call them up and they they verify that nothing's happening with my house. So give me the address of the house that's involved and it's not mine. So we move on. But it's very possible that one of these could be somebody who has figured out how to steal my house. And all they do is go to get your some sort of ID, get your get your social security number, something like that, and off they go. They get a fake fake ID and they go and they switch your house out. They switch the deed. It's it shouldn't be that easy, but it is. So it is. I'm going to reiterate, it's very important that you get involved in the system. We have this information on our website, and I would suggest that everybody do it, even people with less common names. Like I have a common name, so I hear it all the time, but I've twice, I guess now, I've already been I've been called or contacted about that. Truck letter, French Town Bridge, we did talked about that already. This weekend, just so you know, I I spent Labor Day, I spent my morning Labor Day removing invasive species from the park over there, the community park. We my sister and I went through and we cleared about a half acre or so of purple loo strife out of there. There's still a small area to be done. We would like volunteers from that and perhaps for the EAC, get some sort of regular program of going in and taking care of these invasive species. Many hands make light work, and we'd like to have some help with that if we could. There used to be a group called the Weed Warriors. I don't know if you remember that group, Rich?
Yeah, I do.
Karen Bug used to run it and they'd go and they'd pick an area and they'd just attack it and clear everything out. Did a great job down there by the the Wanta Bridge. So just if we can get something moving on, that'd be great. If the AC puts out a call for volunteers, I'd appreciate it if you helped out. There was an article in the Bucks County Courier Times. I don't remember the date. It was not within the last couple of weeks. Somebody actually posted it had to do with warehouses because it's I think it was somebody in Buckingham put it up there. And I read the article and we were mentioned in the article as having warehouses approved on one thirteen, but it was tied up in litigation. Now, this was according to a township source. So I think it's important that we clarify. There are no warehouses approved at the Spinio tract on one thirteen. That is a planned and is industrial park. It was approved as an industrial park at the end of twenty twenty two. Two. And so there's no warehouses there to start with, and and the second part of it is also incorrect. It is not under any kind of litigation. It's been fully approved and whatever happens there happens there. It has still have to go through land development process, but as of now, it's approved as a as an industrial park. Upper Black Eddie, tractor trailers. I had a lot of talk about trucks tonight. I the letter you heard about got out to the local, our our neighbors up and down the river here requesting their support in getting the over the road fifty three foot long tractor trailers off of River Road. And one way we're going to have to do that is to cut it out of their GPS system. Right now, apparently, these truck drivers, the GPS system shows that it's it's okay to use River Road. You know, and I guess it's a pendant roads, Dark Hollow Road and so forth. Even though they're fifty three foot, the road said it's only allowed forty five foot. Kurt, you sent me something about how they actually determine the length of these trucks, which is confusing to me. It's like from the the pin, the kingpin back to the middle. Center of the axles in the back. So I don't know if you suck the axles forward on a fifty three footer. I never walked it off to see how long that is.
You can make it forty five feet.
So technically, fifty three footer is allowed on there, technically.
If it's modified.
If it's modified.
Yeah, not the.
Well, I mean, the axle moving the axles forward and back on a sliding is not it's not particularly difficult operation. So you know, it's they just have to get off of there. The the road is not adequate for them. It's it's got too many bends, too many blind spots, too many sharp curves, too many times that it runs into bridges. Plumstead is having problems now with the down there Plumstead Township at the the Point Pleasant Bridge, where they get down there and they got confused now with the road closed signs for River Road were kind of confusing. Why they didn't just go right up Point Pleasant Pike, I don't know, but instead they tried to turn on to to Hicken Hill Road, another road not particularly suited for tractor trailers. I would say, I don't know, maybe maybe Todd can I don't think it's suited for tractor trailers, you know. I had trouble on it with a triaxle flatbed. So again, tractor trailers are becoming a bit problematic all over the place. We heard somebody today tonight talking about tractor trailers in Dark Hollow Road. If River Road's not available to them, it also will help with the problem on Dark Hollow Road because they won't be able to go anywhere from Dark Hollow Road. We're not talking about trucks that are going to Walter's Nursery or going to Amanda's or going to Schneider Winds delivering stuff wherever places up and down the river might get deliveries. Those people are going to be able to get through. They're going to be able to use the road. It is the over the road trucks that are going from Connecticut, North Jersey, upstate New York, down to Virginia, Alabama, wherever they're going, they're using this as a pass through, and it's just an inappropriate route. So I've gotten so far a positive response from from Bridgeton Township, a positive response from Plumstead, a response from Durham, which was curious series of questions that I responded to them. I haven't heard back from them yet. And on Tuesday, September seventeenth, I will be going down to Salisbury Township to their meeting, their township meeting where they've requested that I come down and address them about it. So that's what we're headed with with that, what we're trying to do to try to resolve some of these problems with the Golden Pheasant Bridge, with Point Pleasant residents who are having issues with these trucks right right in their front door. I mean, there there are some houses that are literally just a couple of feet off the road. And there's nowhere to maneuver. As you get down farther south on that road, it's it's even worse. I guess.
So John, can I ask you a question? I think you started off by saying that there's something about the GPS system. So what is it that you're proposing that we? How do we change the GPS system?
Well, what we're going to do is we're going to get the PennDOT and try to get PennDOT to just restrict truck tractor trailers from River Road.
Okay, but it's got nothing to do with the GPS.
But the G once that happens, then it feeds up to the GPS, you know, people with the GPS, and they'll put a big red mark on it for tractor trailers.
It's in touch with drop GPS systems or whatever systems are, and then they'll identify those roads or.
They the GPS systems tend to check in with the states and and see if there are any kind of restrictions like that that have changes that have occurred. But I don't know how. It's hard because you got you got you got different entities I have to check with. Usually just go to the state and check with them. But sometimes it takes a long time. I mean, there's a there's a bridge that goes across the canal up there in Bridgeton on Bridgeton Hill Road. That's was replaced many years ago, at least ten years ago. It's got a forty ton weight limit on it. Your your GPS systems will tell you it's only six tons. And so it's like that's one route that they could take rather than River Road to get to wherever they're going. I don't know where they're trying to go, to tell you the truth. I guess they're trying to get to Turnpike or six eleven or something. I don't know.
Well, John, thank you for doing that letter and following up with the responses, and thank you for going to Salisbury's meeting.
If if I may, we could ask our police chief to also get in touch with the different apps that are out there regarding the traffic once something is done to have that route taken off.
Yeah.
So we could actually take that route also. And if I'm if I also may, September seventeenth would be the next workshop for the Board of Supervisors. And since John is going to the meeting at another municipality, we had a we had discussed that maybe we would not need to have that workshop meeting. So would we like to forego the September seventeenth workshop meeting?
What was it that we were going to discuss on the September seventeenth meeting? We didn't.
We don't have anything.
No.
No.
I'm fine with the time. At the park, I prefer one meeting a month if we can do that.
So if if the Board of Supervisors would like to do that, what we could do is we could say that the we are not having the workshop meetings only as an on needed basis. So we would cancel the seventeenth because we know John's going to that the other meeting, and then we could have them on an as needed basis.
That makes sense.
If the Board of Supervisors would like to undertake that.
Yes.
Thank you. And I would also ask that we don't close the meeting that if we could possibly go into another executive session due to contract negotiations with the Police Department. And if there was an amicable agreement, possibly come out of the meeting. Thank you.
Just one other quick comment. We heard also about all this trouble on River Road, and I sympathize with the people on River Road. I I it's part of our township. I will note, though, that this is an issue that's a problem throughout the township. And it has to be understood that our Police Department has spent a lot of time down on River Road, I have to say, and they've done some things that seem to have had some effect. But just so you know, where I live, within a quarter mile of my home, over about, I think it's the last three years, there have been four accidents, two of them rollovers, one of them off the road. It was just, I don't know, a month or two ago, went off the road because they failed to negotiate the curve in front of my house. And actually, this was three roll, three of them. One of them was on the side, didn't quite make it all the way over. But, you know, this speeding is a problem all over. Anybody who drives for a living knows that this is a problem. Reckless driving is a problem. I I don't know what to do about it. It's just the general complaint that I have about driving and period is it's 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 a difficult task for the Police Department to be able to be everywhere all the time, every day. So they're doing what they can down there and try to be patient and be as careful as you can. That's all I saw. Every time I went out to drive, I realized that I was going to be running into people who were not particularly conscious of safety. They're more conscious of where they're going, getting there as quickly as they can, and they don't care a whole lot about what fits in their way. Just be aware. So.
Okay, thank you. Public comment.
Judith, this is my first time seeing you at a board meeting, and I need to commend you on your professionalism, your articulation and your clarity of the issues. It's a really welcomed addition. And Supervisors, I commend you for her appointment. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, even though I had a very hard time speaking this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to adjourn. No, to what am I doing?
We're going to go into executive.
Go into executive section.
Yeah.
Suspend the meeting.
You're suspending it, and then you're going to go to executive.
We're going, you'll go.
We're going.
Recession.
That's the word I couldn't remember. I'm making a motion to recess the meeting for executive session. Thank you. All right. So Kurt, do you have anything else with anything we need you then?
Don't worry, it took me a little bit to think of it, too.
Melissa, are you a?